These are the candidates for the Anoka County Board District Four. And currently Jim Cordiak is not seeking reelection. He's held this seat for a number of years. This district includes Columbia Heights, Fridley, Hilltop, and the east part of Spring Lake Park. And these candidates have made it through the primary in August and will be on the ballot on November 6th. But as probably many of you know, when there is a handout outside, early voting is already starting. So people can vote in person or through the mail with early voting now in Minnesota. Okay, like I mentioned, my name is Kathy Tinglestead. I'm a longtime member of the ABC League of Women Voters. I'm a resident of Coon Rapids so that I cannot vote for any of the candidates that will be on the forum tonight. Okay. The League of Women Voters does not support any political parties or candidates for office, but strives to help citizens become informed voters and advocates for important issues we've studied. If you're interested in the League of Women Voters, check out the website www.lwvabcn.org, which stands for League of Women Voters, Anoka Blaine Coon Rapids, Minnesota.org. So with the league, it's women and men and young people can join. And so we'll have the candidates get started by introducing themselves with the three questions that were submitted to them. And I understand that they've been in several other forums, so this is kind of typical for a League of Women Voter Forum. And so I'm going to start this evening with Mandy Meisner and then follow it up with Sean Broome, and they'll be switching order. And so with that, the first question to Mandy Meisner. Describe your background and community involvement. One minute.
Okay. First of all, good evening. It is great to be back in Columbia Heights. I do want to recognize Adam Davis and Joe Strudevent, who did not make it through primary. I appreciate your efforts and I wish you well in your future endeavors. So I have been part of this community for 20 years. My first apartment right out of high school was in Columbia Heights, where I worked multiple jobs to support myself. Seventeen years ago, I moved down the road to Fridley, where my husband Ross and I are raising our two kids. My community involvement spans a decade, but some of my current projects are a sake of food shelf, where I've helped to fundraise for the last five years so they could buy over a million pounds of food. Springbrook Nature Center, I've served on two committees, bringing in over $20,000 for Springbrook. The Fridley, or excuse me, the Mercy Hospital Board Foundation, I've served on that for four years and helped to manage a multimillion dollar budget. I led the community campaign for, to build the new Fridley City Hall on schedule, saving taxpayers $17 million. And I'm a trained volunteer at the Women Shelter for Alexandra House, who is dedicated to ending sexual and domestic violence against women.
Thank you. Next up, Sean Broome.
Good evening and thank you to the League of Women Voters, and thank you very much to the city of Columbia Heights for hosting us here this evening. My name is Sean Broome. My background in community involvement, I've lived in Columbia Heights now for a little over five years. My wife and I decided to move here because this was a great place to start our family, because this was a great place to set down our roots. I have three generations of history going back into Northeast. My mom is a second generation Polish American. Part of the reason why we moved to Columbia Heights was because of our culture and our relationship with the Polish Americans of Northeast, and it's something that helps connect me to my past and something that I really like. I've been involved in creating an organization called Citizens for Safer Streets. This was a group of parents who got together after a child was hit trying to walk to school, who were working with the county, the city, and the school board to find ways to make our paths to school safer. Sidewalks, better signage, and better enforcement. This is, this was my chance to put together something that county commissioners do. I got a chance to work with Commissioner Cordiak and the rest of the folks from the city of Columbia Heights in trying to make a difference in our children's lives, trying to make them safer. Thank you very much.
Thank you. The next question is, what are your qualifications for serving? First up, Sean Broome.
Sure. So I am currently the Director of Public Policy at the Minneapolis Regional Chamber of Commerce. This is a business advocacy organization. And for that, I work with state legislators and decision makers around the region, talking about issues like transit, workforce development, and housing. In addition to that, I've worked for a Minneapolis City Council member in a policy-making role. And I also worked for a U.S. Member of Congress in a policymaking role and outreach role as well. Beyond that, my college degree was in urban studies and my thesis was on the development of post-war housing, namely your first and second ring suburbs, talking about the economic and legal influences, policy influences, that made our communities look the way that they do now. I have a deep background in policy. I'm the only candidate who has experience working for a legislative body creating policy. And I am, I am overjoyed to get the chance to try to put my professional skills and my personal passion to use on behalf of my neighbors.
Thank you. Mandy Meisner.
So I am contracted with North Metro Mayors Association as their Community Relations Manager. I've held this position for three years. Through this work, I've learned about city operation, policy creation, and how to work effectively through legislation. I have built strong working relationships with city leaders, current county commissioners, law enforcement, and legislators that will allow me to start working at our unique district issues on day one. I'm here today because my community has asked me to run for office for years, and I'm saying yes now because I know I can best represent the changing face of Anoka County. I'm here because the community wants a community service leader in this office and not just another politician. I know this because I won the primary with 49% of the vote and my closest opponent with 24%. District Four has called for a new kind of representation, and I am honored to answer that call.
And next question, why are you seeking this office? First up, Mandy Meisner.
Do we just answer that question? Why are we seeking this office?
Wasn't there short-term, long-term?
Yeah. I think number three is short-term, long-term goals.
You have a more up-to-date script. What are your, what are your short-term and long-term goals, Mandy Meisner?
Okay, very good. So when I think of long-term goals, I think about the kind of legacy I want to create. And what I want to leave behind are the same things that I work at, hard at today. Building a strong community by building strong partnerships. Partnerships that will allow economic development opportunities, promote jobs in the trades, and efficiently manage your tax dollars, our community resources, and our infrastructure. Short-term, Minnesota has the lowest amount of mental health beds in the state. The most current bonding bill gave $30 million to create new crisis centers. Now, these crisis centers would address both the much-needed mental health beds, as well as wraparound services for therapy, job placement, and housing. So as a county commissioner, one of the first things that I will focus on is developing the first crisis center in Anoka County right away.
Next, Sean Broome.
Sure. So in the short-term goals, I think the most important thing is to help put the county on a stable financial footing, to make sure that the property taxes of our residents is taken care of from the very start, to put us into the best position possible for when we're in a place where the economy isn't quite so flush, where property tax revenues aren't coming in quite as good. Prepare for the rainy days, here on this rainy day. In the long-term, there's a bunch of stuff that's incredibly important to focus on. I want to work on transit. I think it's important to talk about parks and sustainability through kind of preparing for rainy days like this. But I also want to, in the long-term, bring a really, really intensive policy mind to the Anoka County Board. And my opponent does bring up a really, really great program in the $30 million that's going to be allocated by the state for grants for crisis mental health centers. That money is going to be decided before next year even starts. The proposals are supposed to be due in December, and Anoka County has yet to actually budget money to ask for, for these dollars. The money would have to come from a government agency as a partner. It's important to know public policy. I know public policy. Thank you.
Okay, now we'll move to the section of the program where the audience has submitted questions. And the first one will go to Sean Broome. The question is, how have you engaged with youth in our community?
So the first way that I'd like to think that I've engaged with youth is trying to create a safer environment for them to get to school. Citizens for Safer Streets is something I'm incredibly proud of, and I'm so happy to have the support of the co-founders of that, obviously, because of the work that we've done together to make our kids safer. And that's, that's another thing that I've noticed about trying to build organizations is it's very, very rarely ever on one person, right? It's on the work of many. And so to Stacy and Carissa and Mary and the people who I see out there, thank you for your help as well, trying to make sure that our kids are safer. In addition to that, I've also been an absolutely unapologetic and out-in-front advocate for our children's school and the referendums coming up in Columbia Heights. I support our schools in Spring Lake Park. My little sister's actually a Spring Lake Park graduate, and I think that they deserve great schools. Fridley kids deserve great schools. And Columbia Heights kids deserve great schools. Last year, I helped lead the, the work on the referendum, and I'm happy to be an active and earnest supporter of it now.
Same question. Mandy Meisner.
Yes, I have been passionate about engaging youth for a very long time. One of my first community service work was as a big sister for a seven-year-old here in the Twin Cities. Later, I became a guardian ad litem, so that is a court-appointed special advocate for kids in the foster care system. When I was doing that work, I was actually, I was single, I wasn't a mom yet, but I did, I was aware of these lost children in the foster care system. This is also run in partnership with counties. And so through that work, I was able to help a 14-year-old girl not only get the legal benefits that she deserved, things like, you know, eyeglasses. In the courts, she needed eyeglasses, but who was there to make sure that those eyeglasses got on her face? The foster care system is a very complex system. It's overwhelmed. So through this work, I, I have continued to become passionate, including with education. My most current one is co-founding the TRIP Program, which is a parent and educator-led group, which creates scholarships for Fridley middle school students.
Okay. And the next question comes from the audience. This will go first to Mandy Meisner. It relates also to youth and school issues. Do you support the ISD 13 referendum on the ballot this November? Why or why not?
Yes, I do support the Columbia Heights referendum. It is broken up into three separate questions. I support all three components, and I encourage you to do the same. The, the actual money is asked is about $17 million in total. Most of that is going to North Park Elementary for safety purposes and to update their facilities. That being said, as county commissioner, I also do recognize that there is a division of jurisdiction and power with other elected bodies, and I will always be respectful of these roles, even as I advocate for issues that I believe in.
Okay. Same question. Sean Broome.
Yes, yes. It is incredibly important. As Mandy had pointed out, there's money going to North Park. North Park currently has an unsecure entrance. As folks drop off their kids in the morning, it creates dangerous situations on the roads and the neighborhoods. It is $17 million. Investments in schools, and part of the reason why I think it's important as a candidate for county commissioner, to advocate and to lead for things that you believe in. Strong schools make for stronger communities. Strong schools increase the value of our properties. Strong schools result in a stronger workforce. So as we're looking into the future, we have, we have the workers we need, they have the skills that, that they need to succeed. Columbia Heights schools are incredible, and we need to lift up Columbia Heights schools. We don't need to tear them down. I am happy to lift up Columbia Heights schools. Please vote yes.
Okay. The next question from the audience is, District Four is home to many diverse cultures. What does cultural diversity mean to you, and how will you bring those cultural diversity issues together? And first up is Sean Broome.
District Four is by far the most diverse part of Anoka County, and as such, it needs a unique voice who is capable of bringing together all of the groups in Anoka County and all of the folks here in Columbia Heights, Fridley, Hilltop, and the Spring Lake Park. That includes our Muslim neighbors. We've got a large Somali immigrant population. But we also have a very large Tibetan population. We have a large Latino, particularly Ecuadorian, population. We have to make a point as a leader, as an elected official, to be thoughtful and engaging with them, to go to them where they are, because that's when they'll open up to you. That's when they'll tell you what's going on in their life. I hosted an iftar for my Muslim neighbors because I wanted to give them the chance to come to me in a place that was culturally significant and comfortable for them. Because it can be hard to engage with candidates, with elected officials, with politicians, or whatever you want to call them. But if I set you a table and I bring you dinner and say, "Come tell me your story," it's a great way to get in the door. That is how I will continue to conduct myself and act as your county commissioner.
Next is Mandy Meisner.
That is a great question. We do have a lot of diversity, and in order to represent you, I need to get to know you. And so I have been at the Women Shelter at Alexandra House, where these women literally have nothing but the clothes on their backs and the baby in their arms, just wanting a new life. I have toured the stepping stones and met with homeless people who find themselves homeless because they've had an unexpected medical incident. I've toured Hope for Youth and seen the, the boxes where kids keep their, their personal belongings for sometimes years at a time. So because I have gotten the time to know my community, I can and I will represent you as Anoka County Commissioner.
Okay. Next question from the audience. I run a small business. How will you represent me in my small business? First up, Mandy Meisner.
So over the years, I have worked with multiple chambers of commerce. As county commissioner, it is important that we have welcoming policies and environment, working with Greater MSP, as well as with our Anoka Economic Development Coordinator, hand-in-hand with that. Again, as far as representing small businesses, I need to get to know you, and then I connect you with the community. So one example is Financial One Credit Union. They're one of the few financial institutions that will loan for mobile homes. I connected them with Park Plaza, who is over here in Fridley. They are the only resident-owned co-op in the state of Minnesota. They work really hard around affordable housing issues. And because I made that connection, now Park Plaza has a local resource for their residents, and they can keep fighting for affordable housing issues. Those are some ways that I will continue to work as county commissioner and support local businesses.
Same question. Sean Broome.
Certainly. Small businesses are the backbone of our economy. It's where new jobs are created. It's oftentimes where people of color are employed. It's where, it is where new wealth is ultimately also created. As I consider trying to represent small business owners, I think of my experience when I tried, when I was involved in managing a small business. I was a manufacturing company out in Minnetonka, and the trouble that we went through and the hassle that came through in every week of making sure that you had payroll squared away, of making sure that you were keeping up with your, you know, with your collections and your billing. I know what it's, I know what it's like in the day-to-day of what goes on with our small businesses. You have to be thoughtful about the regulatory burden. What are the things that the county expects out of small businesses? For inspections, for responsibilities, for filing and reporting that the county can dial back or can get rid of to help ease that regulatory burden on businesses. In addition to that, you need to support the infrastructure that will allow our small businesses to be successful. Transit, to bring people to great little stores in Columbia Heights. And then good roads to get folks to, to big businesses and small businesses in Fridley. So, thank you.
Thank you. And the next question from the audience relates to sustainability. Sean Broome will be the first one to answer. How will you promote sustainability practices in Anoka County?
Al Cordiak, the father of Jim Cordiak, is responsible for our county park system. His legislation made it, made it so that Cordiak Park, Bunker Hills, all of these are even, are even possible because of his work. As we look forward into the future, we have to consider sustainability as the next green movement in our time. As I came here, I got to drive through a flooded alley, and it highlights the role that Anoka County has in supporting areas that help maintain and kind of keep water, right? Anybody in Columbia Heights and Fridley, you know how prone we are to flooding. So as we think about sustainability, as we think about our infrastructure moving forward, we have to start to plan proactively and fund infrastructure that can, can do things like help contain four inches of rain on a random Thursday afternoon without flooding out 49th, right? As Anoka County, as we move forward in Columbia Heights with the redevelopment of Savers, that big concrete parking lot on a county road, we have to do more to think about the long-term water storage and use in that area, and that's a place where the county commissioner needs to be active around the county.
Same question. Mandy Meisner.
Sean brings up a good point about the flooded streets. My work at North Metro Mayors over the years, this is one of the emerging issues for all, most of the North Metro cities, which is water management, the infrastructure in the streets, how their new development is affecting that. But when I think of sustainability, I mean, I really think of my number-one issue, which is promoting jobs, jobs in the trade specifically. So we have a real crisis in the trades industries. There are not enough skilled workers for manufacturing, plumbing, construction, and other specialty trades. So I do have a plan in place to start working on that. I've had many conversations with Jamie Barthel at Anoka Technical Colleges, employers like Steinwell Manufacturing over in Coon Rapids. And this is going to take some collaborative effort to do this, and I really look forward to joining the efforts promoting work in the trades and making sure that this is a sustainable part of our economic development. Vocational training is not second place to college.
Okay. Moving on to the next question from the audience, so Mandy Meisner will be first. Recently, the Anoka County Board proclaimed October as Domestic Violence Awareness Month. What will you do to support victims of domestic violence?
Well, I am very pleased to hear that. I have been a trained volunteer at the Women Shelter for Alexandra House. Alexandra House has spent decades dedicated on all fronts to ending domestic and sexual violence against women. This is one agency in which the county does help to fund and certainly works in partnership around policies at the Capitol and as well as with victims. So Alexandra House has actually infiltrated out throughout Anoka County in law enforcement, all of the police officers. Alexandra House is one of the first resources that will be told to them in our community hospitals, Mercy and Unity Hospital. Same thing, there's actually nurses dedicated for sexual and domestic violence, people who come into the emergency hospital rooms. So all of that has been steered towards Alexandra House, which is already doing great work. I plan to continue to be a volunteer there and work along with our efforts to end sexual and domestic violence against women.
Same question. Sean Broome.
Domestic violence is incredibly meaningful to me. When I was a teenager, I was the victim of domestic violence. I was homeless as a teenager. I actually know the experience of living out of a box, of having all of your earthly belongings fitting into a van with you, your mom, your little sister, and three cats. And so when I think about the role that county has in involving itself in domestic violence, it goes from the very beginning, right? Because oftentimes, it will be county sheriffs, or it will be law enforcement officials who come to domestic violence calls. While working at the city of Minneapolis, I helped the city of Minneapolis get a program called the Burn Grant, and it was used in North Minneapolis to help try to break cycles of domestic violence. Kids who are exposed to domestic violence are oftentimes the, those who are most likely to kind of reenact those behaviors that they see. So the county has a responsibility from beginning to end, but what's necessary in supporting folks with domestic violence is making sure that when victims of domestic violence, when women with children come in seeking social services, our county services are directed in their forum and will be good for them, so.
Okay. The next question from the audience relates to the sheriff's office, and first will be Sean Broome. What do you see as the relationship between the sheriff's office and the county board members?
The sheriff's office is an independently, or the sheriff ultimately is an independently-elected official of Anoka County. And so as such, he has his own, or he or she, you know, we should hope for the day when we get a female Anoka County sheriff, they have the purview to do, to run their department as they see fit. The check and balance that comes with being an Anoka County Commissioner is in the budgetary process. The current Anoka County Sheriff has done a relatively good job of engaging with counties around the region, and that would be the only thing, as an Anoka County Board Member, that I'd make sure that we were thoughtful about. In my work in Minneapolis, I've seen the value of what happens across community boundaries, across county boundaries. I was working with some police officers after a shooting in North Minneapolis, and they looked at me because the assailant was from Columbia Heights and said, "Why can't you keep your, you know, your problems in Columbia Heights?" And that is because there is no way to keep, to keep problems in individual communities. We've got to work with Washington County, Ramsey County, Hennepin County, to build collaborative systems across our criminal justice system.
Okay. Same question. Mandy Meisner.
That is true. So the Anoka County Sheriff's Office does work independently. The Anoka County Board does approve their budget. In terms of, you know, I, because of my community work, I do have a great working relationships with current Anoka County Sheriff, James Stewart. And locally, I've been invited to be part of the Fridley Advisory Group. So this group was really formed specifically, specifically for the goal to create positive relationships between police and community. So this group, some of the things that we work on is vetting policies before the police department will roll them out to the community. One example that we just did is our group did give some valuable input to their body camera protocol. So because of that, the Fridley Police feel really comfortable about that this implementation of this new policy is going to go smoothly. So I'm really proud to be part of this group. It's such a privilege and proud of the work that we do.
Okay. We have time for one more question from the audience before we go to closing comments. And so Mandy Meisner will start this question. It's, what inspires you to work towards your goals?
Well, when I was 14, so the summer before high school, I was diagnosed with scoliosis. I'd have to wear a full-back brace for 23 hours a day, seven days a week, for two years. And I felt, I spent that entire summer feeling pretty sorry for myself. But when I became a patient at the Gillette Children's Hospital, I quickly realized how lucky I was, because I saw a lot of sick kids, kids with missing arms and legs, kids that weren't going to make it. So I decided then to make a personal goal, to come back when I was old enough to, to help. So at the age of 18, I came back to the Children's Hospital and volunteered, and that really inspired me to have a lifetime goal of community work. From there, I became a big sister, a guardian ad litem. Again, that's a special appointed, a court-appointed special advocate for kids in the foster care system. After I had my two kids, I began my work for mental health with the Lee Carlson Center, raising $20,000 for families and children. And from there, my community work has grown and kind of brings me up to date, but I don't intend to stop.
Okay. Same question. Sean Broome.
Let me get a refresh on the question.
Right. What inspires you to work towards your goals?
I am inspired to work towards any of my goals, ultimately, from knowing what it's like to be disempowered, from knowing what it's like to be in a position where I felt as though my voice had no value, where as though I was invisible. And it is in that work and in that situation that I don't want anybody else to feel that way. That is why I am running for Anoka County Commissioner. And when I think about what inspires me for this goal, what inspires me to stand up and run and do this, it is the people who I've met during this, during this race. There's a guy named Rick, who when I walked to his door, he told me his story. He told me how the county had helped him, how county social workers had connected him to treatment and to care that was improving his life every single day. And every morning, when I drive past his house, I think about Rick. I shoot him a text to wonder how he's doing every now and then, and it matters because I know that the county has a unique ability to make an influence in people's lives. And what inspires me is the chance to stand up and be an advocate for my neighbors, to stand up and be a voice for those who do not have that voice. That's what inspires me.
So going into the final closing statement, first up is Sean Broome.
My name is Sean Broome, and I want to be your Anoka County Commissioner. I have been endorsed by our next member of Congress, Ilhan Omar. I've been endorsed by Senator Carolyn Lane, Representative Mary Kunisch-Podine, all of the Columbia Heights School Board members, all the co-founders of Heights Citizens for Safer Streets. And those, those endorsements mean a whole lot to me, but standing on their shoulders doesn't make me any taller. The reason why I want to be your Anoka County Commissioner is because of the work that I can do to advocate, because of my expertise in policy, and because of the work I will put in for every single person in this district, in fighting for our children's future, in fighting for a greener Anoka County, in supporting transit to get people better access to jobs, better access to education, better access to their futures. Transit can be transformational for our communities, and somebody has to stand up and say that Columbia Heights and Fridley deserve investment. We deserve the same amount of investment as the rest of Anoka County, and that is what I want to do as your county commissioner. Thank you.
Closing comments. Mandy Meisner.
Thank you again for having me. I am not a politician. I'm a community service leader, and that's really the kind of work that I've been doing for a decade. for a decade, is working with civic, business, and nonprofit sectors, improving my own backyard. And because of that work and my history to get results for community, I do have a lot of really great endorsements. These are people who have been representing our community for decades in our own backyard. I am labor endorsed by the Teamsters, Women Winning, St. Paul Area Association of Realtors, retired Senator Barb Goodwin, Representative Connie Bernardi, Senator Chris Eaton, Senator Jerry Newton, retired Senator Alice Johnson, retired Representative Richard Jefferson, Spring Lake Park High School Principal Matthew Boucher, Fridley Mayor Scott Lund, the entire Fridley City Council, and numerous local businesses. When people are making large decisions about your community in a boardroom, I think it is crucial that they are engaged in community, understand what those decisions mean when they are laid out, and not making decisions for you from an ivory tower. I'm Mandy Meisner, running for Anoka County Commissioner.
So these candidates are running for the Anoka County Board seat, District Four, which is an open seat. Remember to vote on November 6. Early voting starts soon now. And so I'm trying to think of the online version. It's already going, but let's thank these candidates.